Call meeting together is February 8th at 6:34, 2024. All trustees are intended in attendance except for Barb Whitlock, who is excused. Let's stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Any public comments or input? Have anyone? I need someone to make a motion to consent to the agenda from January 11th, 2024.
Take a motion to consent to the agenda minutes from 1:11:24.
Okay. Okay, first by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Judy. Discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? You guys have it, so passed. Okay, moving on to old business. Just, actually, no, what am I doing? Stop me right there. It's been a really long three weeks if you know anything about my family. We've had just a lot going on in our family, so if I'm a little spacey, I apologize. Sheriff's report?
Hi, Sergeant Fazio again. So Elmwood Park's monthly activity report for January of 2024. Number of citations issued for your municipality, eighteen. Number of arrests, three. Number of warrants cleared, three. Number of calls for service, fifty-two. We did forty-five proper mentions, extra attentions. And we just continue to monitor traffic and enforce speed on Taylor Avenue, Lathrop. Parking violations, areas of vandalism, nothing recent. And just miscellaneous calls for service as well. Yeah, the new layout's a little different. We're just starting to track it a little differently, as I'm sure you were made aware by Lieutenant Karen. But yeah, it's just all numbers based now, basically, so. Do you have any questions regarding what we did in the month of January?
Are the citations issued for traffic violations, is that basically?
I don't have the list of all those traffic citations in front of me, but it looks like, yeah. So if it's just citations issued to the municipality, it'd just be basic traffic, yeah, so eighteen.
All right, and then the number of arrests, would that be attached with the warrants cleared? That mean?
Probably, I would say, the warrants, yes. Because it looks like we have three warrants cleared and three arrests, so meaning we came into contact with someone at a warrant here, probably on a traffic stop. They had a warrant they were taking on the custody.
Okay, thank you.
Were you able to check into that, the speed thing? And I know there's what, two in the whole county?
What was that exactly?
You know, the radar tells your speed. We had it a couple of years ago already.
Talking around a speed trailer?
Yeah.
You're requesting one, or?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because it's, I'm on Lathrop, and it's almost getting to the point where it's just.
Okay, did you talk to Lieutenant Karen? Did you guys, because he's the liaison.
Word, okay.
I will send him an email, though, and I'll let him know that you're requesting.
Yeah.
On Lathrop, for example.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's getting to be like fifty, sixty continuous now.
I know, and we have an extra attention there, and we try to do traffic when we're available there, so.
My daughter wouldn't get fired, I would get her stop sticks.
Yeah.
But she'd probably get fired, so I can't ask her.
I will, I'll send him an email as soon as I leave here regarding your request for a traffic.
So it did seem to help, obviously, when I was there a couple of years ago, but like I said, it's now, it's.
You expect that?
Yeah.
We always.
Oh, yeah, it's horrible. Thank you.
Anything else?
Pay your attention to Evergreen. I appreciate that for arrival and dismissal times. It's much appreciated.
We try our best, so.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Yeah, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
As far as I know, overnight parking is not allowed. In the instance that we have, now, since we have parking, or I have access to the garage from the alley with no driveway, we have limited parking in the back. So one time, we had a guest who slept over, and there was no parking in the back, so, you know, I did call up the scene, and they had like no clue. They, well, I don't know, you know? So, because I know a lot of cities, if you call them, you can say, this is our license plate, they're gonna be staying one night, it's a temporary thing. Is that doable, or can we not do that?
In the village office, can't you?
Yeah, we can apply for a temporary parking permit if it's reasonable.
But call to talk to one of these two?
I mean, it's silly, it's, we don't really know if it's the day old, you know?
Right, right.
At seven o'clock, I mean, I'm like, you're not driving home, you're staying here.
Yeah, correct.
You know, so we're trying to be doing the right thing, and so we also want to make sure that they don't get a ticket if possible.
Correct.
Just wondering what the protocol would be.
There is, we can do a temporary parking pass, but I think you have to, I don't know, like, you could always call me and just park in my driveway. I have a plenty.
I mean, it rarely happens that.
But I mean, that's the other thing, is I would, I connect with neighbors sometimes if I needed.
That's true.
But you are always welcome to call me, because I write down.
No, it's, it's, it rarely ha, it was just a one incident. I thought it was an easy phone call to receive.
Yeah, no, call.
And it wasn't, so.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, the village office wouldn't.
Thank you.
I think you could probably call the sheriff's department and just make them aware that you have that.
They have no way of doing it.
So what we do typically in other parts of the county, you call us, dispatch puts it on their log. If we say it's okay to park there, then the third ship comes along and they allow, and it's on the log.
I mean, yeah, it's a very rare situation, but it was just a question I had, thank you.
Sounds like the request through the village would probably be the best thing to do.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. If nobody else has any questions for the sheriff?
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Stay safe out there. I appreciate it.
Okay, going down the list. My report, LaTyria's actually got a lot on her list, so I'm, the only request I have is LaTyria is gonna be working on the newsletter, so if you have anything you want to put on the newsletter, please make LaTyria or myself aware, so we can get that early, because we would like to get that out in March. So that's, she's got everything else. Trustee Hazel, anything to report?
Nothing.
Trustee Johnson?
I just heard, I can't think of the gentleman's name that came in about the cars parked off the front from the church. I'm not sure the guy across down the corner, so a guy who from my house. He's, it's like the very first house I was built there.
Okay.
Supposedly said there's a daycare going on in the house.
On Lathrop?
On, what is it, Saratoga?
Okay.
Yeah.
So the man that came in about the fences?
Bought all the tickets.
Tickets.
The pastor, and they've got all the houses sitting there, all the cars sitting off front, so. About will talk to the gentleman on the corner and see, he's got all the gossip, I guess, so.
But he also wanted a fence. This is the same person, right?
No, the next, next, he wanted one more house to the east.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a daycare in his house?
Well, that's what they're in, in that house, possibly.
Well, if they're licensed, then you can have a daycare in your house if you're licensed, and you can only have so many kids, but you can have a daycare in your home.
Okay.
If you're licensed. Be licensed.
Right.
Here, you'll find out.
Yeah, because I, I went, my kids went to an in-home daycare and she was licensed, so that's not a problem unless they're not licensed.
So would we have to have that a record here or that way?
Good question. I'm not, I'm not, I don't.
I had to have a daycare, and I never had to have anything to say.
You never had to, like, let them know?
Yeah, I know, it's under a certain amount, and there's ways of doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, okay.
Cool.
Check it out.
Check it out, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Trustee Johnson?
Will we get rid of the trailer? Are you guys good?
But LaTyria will also, she wrote down to follow up with the sheriff about that speed trap, not trap, but speed thing, yeah.
Like I said, it's getting to the point where it's comical, though, watching the cars, you know, right before, well, it was still light out, but cars flying, and someone turned right onto Taylor of Maryland, and they slammed their brakes on. They were probably doing about seventy, so, yeah.
I'm saying.
Surprise the car.
With your spot on, I know.
It's ridiculous.
Trustee Ruth?
We're talking, you just mentioned the newsletter, and I think maybe in the spring, it would be a good idea to, again, just remind people, especially in the spring, that if people want to put up fences, if people want to put up sheds, and maybe just.
That's a great idea. That's why I mean ideas, because sometimes we're going, what do we put in there?
Because people don't have any ideas about a violation, if they're not aware of the actual ordinance. And then there's nothing I can record about the lights, but I have to help him, Kurt, do a lot of research, and I'm sure he'll talk about it a little bit later, but.
Yes, our guest speaker.
I gotta piggyback on for the newsletter. Can we do something in there about, like, driving for dummies, or just something, you know, yield signs, stop signs? I mean, you see it all the time in blinkers.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, Taylor's just as bad a ticket as Lathrop.
Trying to get onto Taylor Avenue now, sometimes.
I mean, the gal across the street with the stump, she's had two cars in her yard the last month and a half, something like that.
Yeah.
Two? There's another one?
There was two. One was right in front of her yard, and then the other one was in the yard.
That's concerning, especially because of school right there and kids.
Have you got some type of sign that took her over?
I've seen, it's double yellow, I've seen it multiple times, cars passing, you know?
Well, when there's a funeral, Dragula, Legendorf, they come down, Taylor takes it. And so they're a funeral, and people get really upset, and so they'll drive on the left side on the double yellow to pass the funeral.
Yeah.
They're just really going fast, and it's just so disrespectful to the funeral, but yet they're in such a hurry, they just pass them on double yellow, and they're going. And it's like, wow.
All the things I used to see with my son crossing Taylor Avenue from the bus stop.
And too, with the weather getting nicer, I mean, I've seen lower cycles already, and so people's, you know, the weather gets nicer, and people start driving fast again, and it's like, oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Just hate to see have somebody have a child get, or, you know, best friend.
Especially when it gets warm, I feel like people get even faster. Trustee Stein, anything to report?
One thing, I've been kicking around something in my head, and I don't know if it's worth pursuing, but I know in the city of Racine, if you have a rental property, you have to register with the city of Racine. Some, and I don't remember the details, but a few years. I don't know if it's something that maybe it's the village who want to know what houses are being rented out in the village, if there's any value to that, if it's just administrative, not going to do. But if it's something, I don't know. It's something I can kind of investigate with some other smaller municipalities like we are, to see if it's something worth doing, but just something that's.
I've asked in the past about that, and I don't think that there's anything that you can.
No, but I think this is like more of an awareness.
Yeah.
Racing also has the ordinance where if it's a duplex and you turn it back into a single family, you cannot revert it back to a dual house. John, take a look at that. Do you remember? So that's something.
And we don't know what that duplex is up for sale right now. They were concerned, but I don't think.
What is it sold?
It is sold.
Yeah.
Or just sold.
Yeah, I did the paperwork for the title.
Is it a, is it sold to be a duplex, or you don't know?
It's really sad, it's, it looks like it's always been a duplex.
Yeah, it was built that way, as two addresses.
Yeah, I've been, I've been in that house, because I, a little bit. He was a very nice man. Okay, something to look into?
I just, yeah, it's worth thinking on, I could do a little more digging into it, but I didn't know if it would. I know, it's something.
I know the rental that's right next to Kendall is on the market, but we don't know what's happening.
I've also done paperwork questions for that, but they still haven't had a for-sale sign yet, so I don't know whether they might not.
All right, we're really hoping.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, trustee Judy?
The only update I have is for the car show. I created a flyer for that, and that's me September 28th from nine to two.
And I actually attended a meeting last night for the car show, because Linda could not be there, Jen Hinkle and myself, and Kelly Glasson, who is the new car show chair along with Dennis Goff, but really Kelly is taking the lead on most of it. And just so everyone is aware, we are raising the registration price to fifteen dollars rather than ten, but if they pre-register, they can register for ten. We're gonna work with LaTyria to see if people can send in checks to pre-register ahead of time. That was one of the big reasons why we met. And we had a really good turnout last year, and that is our biggest way of making money for the community events. Everything else, we provide, the band, we provide, we make money on popcorn at the Taylor, or at the Toons on Taylor, but the car show is our number-one moneymaker, and that is how we fund anything we want to do in the village, for fun, for our village and for the surrounding community. So when we get an opportunity, we really should promote that. We're looking at other ways to get the word out, and it was a really good meeting last night. So I think Kelly will do a really nice job, and all supporters, as much as I can, Linda will, and Jen will, will do everything we can, but just so you're aware. Okay? Okay, trustee Whitlock is not here, so administrator Shoff, do you want to report what you have?
Yes, so some updates going on. So build number five, those meters were removed sometime this week, so I reached out to RIC Electric. I was hoping to give those off some meter readings, but they did not get back to me right away. So I was supposed to get it by the end of the day today, but they didn't give anything, so I'll have to fall again, but I'm hoping that it's a good reading, so that's coming up. Then it is on the market. The funeral director did come and take a look at it, they didn't really, the layout didn't work for them. They said they would request one, but I had to go to anyone, but it's on marketplace, and hopefully we get that rented. And then the office is also available, so hopefully we can get that rented out. But when March 1st, we can get something, because it's just, they can't rebuild it right now, so. And then for the sex offender that was in the village, we really didn't get the response we wanted, because we requested that they let us know when he moves out, the owner, and then the offender that lived there. So we really haven't got the response. I did talk to the sheriff's office today, and it's still registered, he's still registered at this address here, so. But he is on the GPS monitor right now, and they reached out to probation and parole, so.
He's still listed, living in the village?
Through the DMV.
Yeah.
What can we do about that?
So we'll have to take a next step. I did reach out, they were able to give me a phone number today for the owner, so I'm gonna try to reach out to him and see.
There are fines that can be avoided, and I think we should do that.
Yeah, so.
When I talked to the sheriff's department when this all started, they were like, there's not much we can do to get them to, and I was like, well, they need to not be living here. So I find that odd, that they didn't really, they haven't been very forthcoming into like what else we can do, so I don't know, you could also talk to Mark. They did receive the letter, the owner and the offender both received the letter, and we know it was received because it was certified, so.
Because somewhere around the corner, it's five hundred feet from the park.
Yeah.
No, we have to start finding to get them out. I think maybe we find the landlord, I don't know if we can find the offender, but I think it's something that we should definitely pursue.
Yep.
Yes. Yes, I'm hoping to reach out to him, and then if not, we'll just go straight to the fines, because resources matter.
To go, to go right to the fines, because we haven't had any, like, they have not shared with us where they, where he's gone, where he's moving, it's very weird.
Unacceptable.
Yeah, and they, I was able to find out today that he lives between here and then another home in Racine, so.
Well, he's living here, he's not far from here. Don't come back.
Yeah.
And we'll slap people with the fine, and every time he violates it, we'll slap people with the bigger one.
Jen noticed that the car, one of the cars had moved to the back.
Yeah. I think, I think one's, one of them's gone.
I also know that the sheriff's department sent this person, he is in and out of jail for a bit, so he could also be, that could still be his home, well, not his address, but he could actually be in jail right now and not actually living there.
Makes it even better that he's around.
So I do remember talking to the sheriff about that, and she said, well, this is somebody that is constantly back in rather than being out, so I don't know if he's actually there, or if they just haven't updated it in the DMV because he's in jail. So, okay.
And then the next thing, you know, response to the memos we sent out, was like, make this request, and then change the due date, so we only had two defendants that wanted to change the due date for their rent, and then the church, and then the spa. But I already paid the rent on time this month, so, yeah. Positive feedback there. Then the tree stump came out, and a former tree care took down the tree right here on the complex, and then that a great airplane, so that's all things there.
Then I would like to talk to Ken Hinkle, trustee Hinkle, there is one other tree stump we should probably talk about in the village that we should probably let them know. They moved in after this ordinance was in place, and we should probably let them know it's a village ordinance, and they should take their.
Is it damaged, dead?
Oh, the tree has been taken out, but they just never removed the stump.
Oh, stump?
It's in their front yard, and so it's a house right down by you, same color as mine.
You know, it's good.
Yeah.
And then we did send out an invoice for the tree stump removal, so we sent it out today as well.
And the rule is Shirley has a month to pay, if she wants to pay for it. And if she doesn't want to pay, then we're just gonna put it on her property taxes, and we have let her know that for the end of the year.
Just curious, how much was it?
Six hundred in total.
It was five hundred with a twenty percent proxy fee, it still needs six hundred.
May I follow up with the tree company to see if this is paid, or how is that going to be handled?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, oh, you paid it? Yeah, so she'll either have to pay us, or it'll be put on her property net, so she has a month to pay care of it.
Okay. Well, good, I'm glad that's, yeah. I've heard from a lot of people that they're really happy.
And then the next thing I want to work on is the village website. So I got a call from a hobby caller, Vise. I did send out that information with a link in the email today, too, if you want to take a look at it. They work for municipalities, it looks really good. They have a Zoom conference where they can kind of let you know what's going on, so I'll be trying to do a training next week and see what kind of information they have, because they've been a lot of villages, and it looks really good. Really excited, and they can change it to any format, so .gov is what we're looking for, and they say they're able to do that, so.
I do feel like we have to do something with the website, because it's really hard for people to. It's hard for me to find information on there, and it's just very clunky, and it's, it's just really hard. I think, you agree, yes? I mean, it's really, it's hard for LaTyria to post on there, things get lost in there, and I just, I feel like people can't find information, so that's something I really would like to see if we can tackle this year. So.
LaTyria, that's awesome.
We're gonna see how much it costs, also. And if it's way out of our price range, then we'll look into something else, but I think what we have right now is just looking terrible. Okay.
Then moving into the spring, I kind of wanted to talk about revisiting the speed humps, having that conversation again, and then talk about the gazebo and the concrete slab, and then Kurt also goes that a little bit more, but that somehow wanted to bring Kevin's attention. And then if anyone does have any ideas for spring newsletter, please let me know as well, and I can plug it in, so. And it's kind of a fast Easter, but maybe we can plan an Easter egg hunt sometime, where I have these money to visit, so it's an idea.
One other thing I wanted to say about the newsletter, as far as like just mentioning the storage, the violations of the storage, the folds, trailers and stuff, campers, because that's something that people use a lot in the summertime.
And maybe a reminder about garbage and evening out, because people do spring cleaning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both big up.
If not this newsletter, maybe the next one.
Four holes.
Four holes.
Which would be funny.
Four holes.
Even just maybe listing the bulk pick-up days might be good, just so people know, like, mark this on the calendar, not the ten days of the calendar.
Do we have to record that?
Okay, moving on, I'm gonna, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so.
All right, this is good information.
Yeah, so I don't know if you all remember, but we talked about this a couple of months ago, we talked about focus on energy, so I was able to talk to a representative today, we'll look at that and pass it down, and I'll pass it back this way. Kelly Stein brought this program, and they are able to give us a rebate on each first, about two hundred fifty dollars per furnace, and then also lighting, so there's a lot of good information, especially with.
Checking with those.
So we'll have a representative that we're with, and hopefully all that good stuff.
Yeah, so. It'd be good. Okay, the rest will be the end, okay. So for old business, just a discussion about purchasing and installing speed humps in the village, produce speeding in residential areas. We talked about this in the fall, and Laura looked into a couple of things. I just want to have a discussion on if you think you want to keep going forward with this, and where would we put them, and then Brian, who are our roads guy, I don't know if there's anything you want to look into or like check into, to see if other places have done this and how it worked, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to think, very curt, I mean, if you've got a stretch, do you put them every hundred?
If you'd be.
Every three hundred, you know?
I have no idea.
Yeah, no, but I'll check into it, yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah.
I think it's definitely very reasonable, and I like the fact that you can remove these. The one place that I would suggest we put it is on the South Elmwood area, because that is, that is a much longer distance. On North Elmwood, we have a stop sign, although I mean, round that corner, sometimes people pick up speed, but that stop sign by St. English does slow people down.
You mean the stretch that Myhawkes is on?
Yes.
Okay.
There is it, that is a long stretch compared to the North Elmwood side, it's a long stretch.
Yeah, I'll make just one comment about that, and I don't really have a huge issue with people speeding through there.
Okay, that's what I wonder, speed.
Not really, that I notice, of course, I don't sit there and look out the window.
Right.
But I, I don't see it being a real issue.
Something else we could do is we could ask, I know Brad Jake would be all about it, because I think he brought it up, but I'd like to know from other residents that live over there if they see it as an issue. So I don't want to waste money if it doesn't need to be done. I feel like the speeding is really on Taylor, like, if we can't put speed humps on, I don't know.
I know there's an issue on our street, people come around the curb by your house, and by the time they get to mine, they're swaying down their brakes to go around. A lot of it is the delivery trucks. They just got it.
Okay.
There's kids, and people have fenced in yards, and it's just.
There's that curb.
Yep, it's.
That's not a bad idea.
And then Maryland on the other side, between Taylor and then front, yeah. Yeah, that, that stretch.
There's kind of a blind curb.
Yep, it's a really soft curve as you come through, you come up.
Yeah. Oh, through, in between, yeah.
In between that chunk.
Yes.
Yep. And there's bus stops right there on Maryland. And Taylor has a huge bus stop area, so you think it's slow people down, and you're coming up to a bus stop, you know?
Okay.
It makes sense to sort of look at the longer stretches, because that's where people probably.
Well, I think Brad brought up, Brad Jake brought up the one by your house, because he felt like people were speeding, and I do feel like that is a long stretch, but I don't really, like, you are right there, like, if I'm walking, there are people that barrel through there sometimes. So just keep it in mind, and let's maybe make a decision maybe in March. I don't know if we want to find out from any other residents, if they're, if they're concerned about any areas where they live. We have a lot of smaller cul-de-sacs, so that's not really a problem.
Does that make you put it in the newsletter? I was just gonna say.
We could put it in the newsletter and have people just.
Saying, please give us your opinions.
Yeah, it would be a bad idea.
If you have concerns about speed, make that your home rep.
I do wonder, you know, Taylor and later, I wonder if there's ever any like flashing, like, it's thirty-five miles per hour here, like, to get people to realize how, how much they have to slow down. I don't know, like, a roundabout is way too big. Like, I looked at the roundabout we were talking, that is, that would take away from people's yards. We cannot put a roundabout in there.
So across from the sledding hill on Ohio, there's that school right there, I don't know the name of it, but there is a sign that tells you how fast you're going, and if you're going, obviously, above the speed limit, it starts flashing at you.
I want to see now, is that, did they rent that, did they buy it, like?
No, it's permanent.
Some of them are, like, solar powered.
Yep, it has a little.
It wouldn't be bad to look into something like that. Brian, would you mind?
I've been around schools a lot, but.
I've seen it from schools a lot, but.
But that curb is really dangerous and I think it's like one person from a winter car over, you know?
And for what I swear, that's pretty surprising how cheap these speed bumps are. They're not.
They're, they're, and they, you take them out?
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to.
Do you think the speed humps are gonna be much of a deterrent or do you think we're gonna have to get the bumps? Because there are people just getting used to it.
I don't know, I went over the one by the beach over this past summer and I have an SUV and I slowed down.
I slowed down too.
Yeah.
I think it'll slow people down.
They, they took those out, but yeah, it slowed me down.
I had thought about one thing too about this school. I hate to put up another sign because we have so many signs, but how about school zone, fine double. And letting the sheriff know that. It's like, okay, you're in school zone, you're gonna double, you're fine.
You can grow past that and then on top of it also when there's the let out time and start time for the school, there's a light that flashes on top of it.
Right.
So it drops the speed down, I think, ten miles an hour and this is the end of fun levels. So if you're really not watching your speed and you're just doing the normal thirty-five, you're getting a hundred fifty dollars ticket.
Plus you got the sheriff that sits right across from Pig every day to all day long, so.
You learn.
Okay, so I think looking at whole things, I'd love to know if there's something we could put like a sign that we could just make people aware of how fast they're going because there's way, been way too many accidents on Taylor and later, so. I'm gonna call Brian, like, what is going on by your house? He's like, oh yeah, there is an accident. All right, moving, anything else? I'm just gonna move on, okay. We need to set dates and our new business, we need to set dates for the 2023 open book and board review.
Yeah, I, I have a handout if you got it, we can go over it real quick.
Yep.
First thing we gotta do is post a first class notice in the Journal Times for the open book and the board review. And that should go in no later than March twenty-fifth. And then I'll mail the assessment change notices on April fifth. We just got a few building permits. We're not doing a reevaluation this year, so there won't be a whole lot of notices going out. And the open book I'm setting for April twenty-second and that's just for me. I'm the only one that has to be there. And then tentatively I'm setting up the board review for May sixth and there we would need, you know, the board there, at least three people.
I think it's Kendall and myself and then was it you?
It was me.
And then totally the, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So May sixth is okay then?
Uh, yeah, it should be fine.
That'd be fine. Okay, and then one of the members will have to have training. They did change the law. You didn't have to have it every year. Now you have to have the training every year.
Yep, that sounds good. Kendall said she would take care of that.
So, yeah, that's, that's it then. We'll have the open book on April twenty-second and board review on May sixth, correct?
Okay, excellent.
Six, six to eight P M.
In, in here?
In here.
In here, perfect. Okay, card? Yeah, should be good. Any questions?
Any questions?
I think you're good, thank you.
No one says anything, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great night.
Yeah, you too.
I think it's raining. Maybe it's out, maybe it's out. All right, our next item is discussion of additional tenant complex repairs and improvements. I asked Kurt to come because there was a whole list of stuff he gave and I did not feel like I'm doing justice. So I was like, put Kurt on as a guest speaker tonight. So fill us in on things you wanted to repair in the tenant complex and what you're looking at, because you had a really good list.
Well, originally we got the bid for the windows and then we added the eight doors for two doors. And that came up to about twenty-four thousand dollars for the eight steel doors. Well, little things just keep creeping in and the problem is the doors come with hinges. There's no latches, no closers, so we gotta get numbers for those. And we basically got a number for thirty-seven hundred dollars from Cornell, which is close. And, and that's for key locks and a closer on H1. But siding unlimited won't put the closers on. It'll put the, put the lock on, the latch.
Right.
But they won't install a closer because I guess they're a little bit touchy to, to put in.
Okay.
So Cornell would be able to put those in for about a hundred dollars a door.
So eight hundred.
There is another hundred, eight hundred dollars. Now, since I got this quote, I started thinking more about the actual lever locks. They're all keys and we've, we've got so many keys. I don't know if we can come up to the next century here, maybe go with a push button entry. And the ones that he has over there at Cornell are expensive. You know, they're five hundred and sixty dollars a piece versus a lever lock, which is two hundred and twenty. But I did a little math and when siding unlimited gave us a quote for doors, they're two hundred and, twenty-two hundred dollars a door. And we basically allowed ourselves twenty-four thousand dollars, which is about three thousand dollars a door.
Okay.
So that push button key lock actually works. It works. Kendall and I talked about it. She came up, you know, you can get a fifty, a hundred fifty dollar keypad, but I kind of like to get something a little bit better than that.
Okay.
That's my personal choice. Also too, the keypad also has a lock on it that you could unlock. So you could, and that's one thing you could do with Cornell where you probably couldn't do at Home Depot or anywhere else, where you could key them so it'd have a master lock. So all with every, every, all eight doors.
With him.
One key.
But then they all have different codes.
Because I, the keypad thing, face it or not, we're landlords, you know? And maybe we get a six-month rental, maybe we get a twelve-month rental and then we gotta change keys.
Right.
I mean, we gotta keep the people from building five who are requesting their keys, they have to return them.
Right.
You know, and that's, you know, so I don't know how many people got keys for that door. And with a push button, you could, you know, reprogram it after every rental, you know?
Just not, I kind of like that idea. There are a lot of keys, a lot of keys, a lot of keys, and they're also, sometimes they stick.
Yeah.
They don't work and we have tenants complaining because it doesn't work, it's not happening. If you think it's a, it's just like it's kind of a wash in.
Yeah, well, we could probably look, this was just suggested a couple of days ago about this. And he showed me the one that was five hundred and sixty-five because he's, that's the ones he has on his doors. And they've been on for ten years and he said, I never had a problem.
Okay.
Is there one that's a couple hundred dollars cheaper? Maybe, I don't know. But, you know, I kind of like the, the idea of a push button key system.
I do too.
I agree.
And also you never know if people are making copies of the keys.
Well, that, yeah, that's, that's it. I mean, I bet you, you know, whatever. And so.
Okay.
That's one thing. Now, windows for building three, we discussed, we really, really did discuss buildings for, or windows for building three. There's set twenty-six panels of windows up here. And in here it's nice to have the light, but in the gym, I don't really believe that we need that artificial or that, that lighting from outside. And we came up with the idea of just taking the glass out and blanking them off, put insulation in there because I think there's a lot of heat loss up in that gym.
Pay a lot of money in gas, really.
Yeah, I, it's over nine hundred bucks a month.
I, I like the idea of not blocking these up even though I think more, did you say? The, the sun goes.
Right.
So it doesn't make sense, but I, I don't know if it would just.
Well, this is what I'm thinking. I'm thinking take them out and put a better glass.
Yeah, yeah.
Like an E glass. And that's what siding unlimited gave us a number of basically twenty-two thousand dollars to replace all these windows and do that.
Well, is that the, just these or is the one?
No, all, there's twenty-six of them.
In the gym too?
Yeah, total.
We'll just replace these ones in this part.
Well, place, there's just a single painted glass.
Right.
And, you know, so we would put a, a double painted glass, E glass, and it'd be a higher rate.
Yeah.
Well, in the gym I'd block them off.
Right.
Because they don't, in my mind, they don't serve a purpose. And also on both ends of the gym, there's ductwork. I don't, probably nobody ever looks up there, but I do. And there's ductwork. They put that in there for when this was a school and they had to have air exchanges. Certain amount, certain amount of air exchanges per, per hour or whatever. And one of them is an exhaust and one of them brings new air in. Well, that, they have, they haven't worked since I've been here. And I blanked them off on the outside because years ago when it was heating, I went up there and there was just hot air coming out of these areas. They're not a hundred percent sealed. So we gotta, in my mind, we gotta remove those. And in removing them, we have to work from the inside, which we have to set scaffold up to get up to those points. Well, where are they? They're right underneath the baskets that are there, our existing basketball hoops that we just put the legs on in.
Right.
So to remove those is twenty-one hundred dollars, so it just kind of adds up. We just keep getting another, you know, a couple bucks here, a couple bucks there. And as far as this building goes, the, the doors that the renters use downstairs, the double doors down there, we're having a lot of issues with.
Oh, the, the mullion. I, I ask you one question. If we remove the basketball and replace, replace the hoops, are you saying that like not the?
We'll just take them off the wall, set them off to the side.
And put them back on.
Once the ductwork's out, put them back on.
Okay, that's, I just had a question about that. I wanted to make sure you were talking about other basketball hoops. Okay, yes, the double doors that go into the gym, I think are pretty bad. I've been down there.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So the mullion right now is the problem and on any old building that, even in, I, I've talked to a guy that worked every scene unified. He said they all, all had the same issue. They're made out of steel and the bottom six inches just rust right out. I guess at the schools that what they do is they cut them out and cut pieces out of another door frame, put them back in and weld them up. But we don't have that kind of thing. Now, the mullion right now is rusted out at the bottom. I've made a bracket and it seems to be working right now. But the screws that I have holding the mullion in place is into rusty material. And I just don't know how many times the doors are gonna slam and screws are gonna back out and then I'm back at square one. If that mullion moves at all, you can't close that door and lock.
Right.
So that's the problem. So the mullion replacement of number is around eighteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
But I, just talking with Tim from Cornell who does these things, he also said that he could probably replace that whole frame and door, everything for around eighteen, or eight, eight to ten thousand dollars. It's a big number.
That is a big number.
It is a big number, but I don't have a number from siding unlimited because I just requested.
To find out.
Find out what those two doors and frames would cost.
Okay.
But then we would have to put closers in and then, and then again.
That's a door, that, that door goes to the outside, right? Not the door that goes by, that's by the, so, okay.
But there again, I would also like, if we do anything down there is to make a push button entry because, you know, every season I think we, we change the code number to get in. Like, and that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, we don't have an exact number, but I think the highest number would be ten grand.
Okay.
So those are.
And like listening to all these numbers.
Oh, yes.
Just like.
That's to replace the double doors?
Yes.
That on the outside.
Yeah.
How much would it, thinking like if you have that framed in, it just go to a single door?
Well, that's, that's true, but, you know, I don't know what that would cost. And plus I would want it to be a double door anyway because we might bring in equipment.
Yeah.
You know?
Probably like the service entrance.
My biggest problem giving equipment in is the stairs. You know, because we've had to get up to the lights. That's a whole other deal. We had to get up to the lights and we can't get a lift in there because the forceps.
Isn't the mullion in the way to be able to?
I'm sorry?
Is the mullion in the way to be able to make the space?
No, mullion comes up.
Oh.
The mullion comes up. That's why it's, yeah, so you've got a full five foot opening.
But then they've got those stairs that lead down.
You've got the down, you know, the only way you could do that is build a big ramp, but, you know? Because we, just to fill you in, we had a light issue two weeks ago where these kids are kicking soccer balls and the lights are hung up by two fasteners. They're on chains and they clip onto the beam. And they're pretty good, but if the kid hits that chain just right, just right, which he did, it swings down and it's a safety issue.
That would make me very nervous when I heard that. I'm like, oh my God, lights are in the gym!
So we did have that issue probably about three weeks ago and I didn't know who to call. Finally I called the ultimate, absolute, absolute construction. They came over just like that and in four hours we had it fixed.
But there's fifteen of them.
But there's fifteen of them and there's quote, and what they did is they left the fasteners and then we drilled a hole, a pilot hole, and then put a screw into the beam and that way it's never gonna come off. So there's fifteen more of them and this quote was five to six thousand dollars for that. I don't know if I would.
Stop playing soccer in the, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I'd do that. We've had those lights up there for ten years and I've only seen it twice, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
But that's one thing.
And then, oh, I like the.
Go ahead.
No, you got the last one. You're doing great. What do you guys think about all these things?
Wait, so what it costs us eighteen hundred dollars? Is that how much it costs us to replace that light?
No, eight hundred, eight hundred seventy-five.
So eight hundred dollars every time a kid kicks a soccer ball into it just right?
Well, it's happened twice in two years, you know? I don't know. I mean, I, I think we could probably come up with somebody to give us a better number than five thousand, you know? You know, that, that just seemed like a really high number.
I mean, one second decision by a kid totally knocks off our, our.
Well, and it's a, it's definitely.
Over that season.
And it's definitely a safety issue.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You know, I, but we did use absolute and they were, they were great to work with. They're just expensive.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they did, they stopped presses when that BB ceiling fell down. They were very expensive, but they, they did everything they had to.
I mean, I wonder if it'd be possible to put like a, some kind of a cage over it, like they have over that block?
Mm-hmm.
And just kind of put something up there just to cover that light fixture itself.
Oh, yeah. You could, but it's gonna be more money. You know?
That's like Ken's idea.
Couldn't you do a secondary safety?
Like a safety.
I'm sorry.
Couldn't you do some sort of a secondary safety?
You could, you could, but you still gotta get up there.
You still gotta get up there.
Yeah, and you gotta use scaffers.
If you put a sign.
You can't do a cherry picket, you can't get down the stairs. I want them to run.
There is something besides.
Oh, sure. Probably.
I have a guy who's got twelve foot steel.
Responsibility back. Cause that ceiling is not low. There's no.
Yeah, it's twenty-six feet up. So, I mean, you just can't get. You know?
It might not be a bad idea.
Close them to the left. The twenty-six footers can get up there. That's what I love here. I'd do it myself.
Yeah, but.
All right, let's keep talking, let's keep going.
Sorry.
Right in the back end.
Can I add a couple more things?
That maybe we, if they're playing soccer down there, there's no reason why it should go all the way up to the lights. Like I have a kid that plays soccer constantly. And he's good, but there's no reason for it to hit up there. So Kendall brought up like, if you, if you hit a light down, you're gonna have to pay a fine.
Well, that's, that's probably a real good idea.
Coaches, coaches have to talk to their, their, their players and say.
Soccer addendum.
You can't.
The rental agreement.
Yeah.
You can't.
Or basketball.
You can't try and hit the light. Like, I could see kids doing that. I lived with the middle schoolers all the time. Um, okay, the last thing was about the crumbling concrete slab in front of the building.
Well, yeah, I took the liberty of looking at how much to replace that slab out there. It's twenty foot by twenty foot and it's, it's, right now that concrete is on break. There's no, there's no stone under it. So taking all that out, take four inches of dirt out, put four inches of stone out, put a twenty by twenty slab of concrete would be four thousand dollars. That's just to give you an idea of what it costs. I know you talked about gazebo's.
Right.
And stuff like that, but when I've been here, when I've seen the bands out there, they look like they took that whole concrete space up, you know, so I don't think you want to go much smaller.
We wouldn't want to go smaller.
No, but it does make me nervous that somebody's going to trip and hurt themselves. And I do feel like when we have either events here or even if people wanted to like rent the hall and, and use if they ever, I don't know if they ever asked if they could use it on, that's just a great space that if somebody asks, you could set, I mean, even for the car show, we could set things up there. We can't right now because it's so, it's such a mess. It's so damaged.
Oh, it is and, you know, I mean, might not put a gazebo up right away, but at least you'd have the foundation.
Yeah, that'd be a good start.
You know?
Um, so I just, I don't know. I feel like I want Kurt to move on some of these things.
I, I was just gonna say, I think it's kind of like, like it's, it sounds like it's like a list, like the house has fallen apart, but we need to like take it step by step. So my, my suggestion would be to prioritize like what needs to get done.
I don't think that this is the order.
Well, these things, all, all these things that I'm talking about. Well, these things, all, all these things that I'm talking about, I don't think they come out of our budget. That's, that's the way I look at it, because budget gets shot real quick when you got thirteen thousand dollars to replace the ceiling.
Right.
You know? So what I'm thinking is adding all these little projects that are out there, um, onto your loan.
Yeah.
And, and, and then add a few more bucks for all the hidden fees that are gonna be out there.
Okay.
Because...
I think the one I would, I would wait on is the lights in here.
Oh, no, I, I agree.
But I think the doors, um, I don't think we can really vote tonight, but I think we need to...
It's a discussion.
Let's make a, um, um, note that it should be on the agenda for next time, I'm voting. And if you can come up with, with numbers, like, this is what I found out from Hornell, this is what I found out from, um, taking out the air duct or whatever is in the gym, um, and the door to the gym. If we can have solid numbers, then I think we can, we can vote, or if we get some, I don't know if you wanna get any bids?
Well, I'm gonna probably get bids on replacing the door.
Yeah, would we need three bids if it over five thousand for each individual project?
Yeah.
Would we need three bids for each individual?
Oh, I hope not.
If it only, only if it over, only if it over five thousand? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, no, I...
I think, I think...
The door would be, well, I'm only gonna get two bids for the door.
That's fine.
Because one will be for Siding Unlimited, which is already in the works, and then the other one would be Hornell.
Okay, I like, I, I not, these numbers don't scare me. Um, the lights, I would be the only thing I would wait on.
That scares me more than anyone.
The lights.
I mean, those are the ones that I really...
Yeah. I do think, though, if, for the soccer, whoever the coaches are, we just need to have a conversation.
Maybe in your, in your contract.
Did they break the light together before?
Pardon me?
I think that's...
Did they break the light together before?
Yeah, it's, the lights, minimal, it's the labor. It's the labor.
Well, we were trying to see if we put a ring camera in, or light, you know?
I don't know, it would be a bad idea.
Because, yeah. Not bad. Um, so, I think, like, everybody is under, understanding of these things going forward, but I don't think we, we're not voting on anything tonight. But I think Kurt, if you could just come back with, like, this is what we're gonna do for here, this is how much it's gonna cost. The biggest one being, if you want some bids for the, the doors down in the gym, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we could get higher numbers pretty much for all of that.
Yeah.
But there's gonna be hidden numbers.
Yeah, I know.
Because, um...
I know right now with my daughter-in-law, so...
Yeah, because the...
Black one down there.
The, the, you know, it's like, in the last two days, I, I came up, I was like, okay, Siding Unlimited's gonna frame out the windows and the atriums and then put splashed out. Well, that needs to be all painted.
Yeah.
That all needs to be painted, and, you know, that's a hidden cost. Um, the new doors, they're just gonna be prying.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to pry, we're gonna have to do something with them. The chin, one of the chimneys on, on Building Five needs to be tucked for you.
Okay.
And then I found, I just drove in today with John driving around, and I go, "Oh, that's right. We've got glass-blocked windows in Building Four that are broke, and then we got covered with plywood." You know, I don't know how much that's gonna cost.
Yeah.
But it's just all these hidden numbers that if we do a loan, let's make sure we got enough for...
Cause we'll have to do a loan. And we'll have to do that relatively soon, so that we can pay off our final bill for Siding Unlimited. So you guys will need to decide, one, you'll have to vote on this, the new loan we have to take out anyway. And then you'll have to decide, do you wanna buffer that loan to be larger when you guys do approve it, to be able to encompass some of the projects at these times?
Okay.
I agree with what you're saying, yeah.
The, the first one you listed here, the handles and closers, we don't really have a choice about that. We have to do that, don't we?
Yes. It's, it's highly recommended, obviously, a handle.
Well, yeah.
You know, and my original thought was just to get a lever handle like we have, say, like, on this door, right? Well, that, that encompasses more keys.
So that's...
Well, yeah, so our decision wouldn't be, do we need handles? The decision would be, do we want the push-button entries or not?
Exactly, yeah, and we need a clo, we need closers, according to the people I talked to, otherwise, they're just gonna...
Yeah.
You know, wind catches them, and you start, starting to... And I know, we talked today, and you can get push-button, um, uh, door and lever handles, but they go to gamble. You can get them a hundred and fifty bucks to six hundred some shirts. And these are five sixty-five, sure, but that's what he sells.
Right.
And this is what, if I'm dealing with him, he's gonna push that, that.
Most expensive one, or most to it?
Well, I don't know, maybe we can step down, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
But this is what he sells, and I really don't wanna go to another locksmith. He's worked over here millions of times.
I get it.
I think that I just, I really want Kurt to come and explain all the little nuances that are coming up, that we, we do have to care for these buildings, because they, they are where we get them.
But you just put a three-quarter million dollars into this place, you, you gotta...
Keep working on it.
Keep going a little bit.
Yeah, I'm agreeing.
When it comes to the concrete slab and potential gazebo, something to look into is beautification grants for racing county. A lot of times, you can get a grant through them, or, um, doing part, or additions to the community that's for, um, you know, people getting together and all that stuff. The state also does it, so we can look into grants that'll either match or cover it completely. Union Grove does all the time.
Okay.
I think their last one was for, like, five hundred thousand. So, I'm not saying we need five hundred thousand for our front lawn, but maybe find something that'll cover that expense, or at least matches. I think that'd be great.
Yeah, that's great, great idea.
And I didn't even mention furnaces.
Okay, um, you're good?
I, I am...
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna replace furnaces, that's five thousand dollars a furnace, I have four.
I, so, this list of everything that has to be done, besides what you wrote, is this all, like, in your head?
No, a lot of it's, a lot of it's rough, you know, to my head, to Laura's head. But if we have, if we have this sheet...
I'm a spreadsheet.
This is on here, instead of...
You have it in here, in the... Right, okay, but it's, like, you keep mentioning this, and then this, and then this, and then this. I know, I know, that's why I'm wondering, like, my whole life, my whole life is in a spreadsheet. So I'm just kinda thinking...
I would be happy to create a spreadsheet of actual numbers if I met with Kurt over the next month and a half, when you guys do decide to approve the loan amount, we can have an actual spreadsheet.
That would be great. That would be great. And then, like, yeah, like, one sheet of the actual, like, and the next sheet of, like, potential, what's coming up down the road thing, so...
Cause I don't like surprises.
We like workbooks.
It might be something to consider, the furnaces, though, because they're getting close to being thirty years old.
Yeah, that's on the sheet too.
Yeah, you know, so it's like, just something to consider, because we're gonna keep this complex, it brings in a lot of money for us, and it has been neglected for so many years. Right. Um, it does need to be taken care of, and unfortunately, as a board, we have to make hard decisions as to how we're gonna spend money. But we have to. And you said only four? We, everything else is new, but there's still four.
Right, there's eight furnaces, four of them are new, four of them need to be replaced, and they're all nineteen eighty-five.
Is that another energy thing we've looked into?
Yep.
Two hundred and fifty dollars a furnace, so there.
Plus the savings every month, of course.
Oh, yeah. So, okay. All right, um, discussion of amending language ordinance ten point two point five. Tree stump removal. Any person cutting down a tree for any reason should be required to remove the tree and its stump to below the ground level. So Laura brought this up, cause she just wanted to know, um, you wanted it just to be clearer? Right, I'm just saying, anybody cutting down a tree, about anyone felling a tree, anyone bringing a tree down for any reason, or, um, felling a tree, having it blown down, knocked down, you know, something along that line, that we can be a little bit, cause somebody will say, "Well, jeez, I didn't cut that tree down, the wind blew down." Right.
Yeah, stuff don't put to interpretation.
Yeah, damaged...
Maybe I have to tighten that up a little bit, just for this case removed from your property for any reason.
I, just because we had such a, a problem with this, do, Kendall, do we need to put in here, like, a date? Like, um, from two thousand nineteen on, or?
I mean, it might not be a bad idea. So they don't have to answer that question?
Like, it says it right here, and that's that.
Right, yeah. Cause I, I've got a date, a note here for ten nineteen to twenty-one, it was amended and adopted for taking the stump out. So, I mean, we could put, like Kendall said, or Ally said, just like... I feel like we need a date to, like, people, so people aren't saying, "Well, you took down your tree," you know?
Was it ten nineteen, twenty-one?
It was ten nineteen to twenty-one, it was amended and adopted. But it, it needs to be tightened up, we have to figure out the wording on that.
Yeah.
Anything, I like Laura's idea, um, is there anything else? And I feel like, again, we cannot really vote on this, because we have to get the language down to approve it, but, um, I will work to make it better, and then you guys can yay it, or nay it, um, at the next meeting. Is there anything else that you want to change in that? Felling, um, damaged trees?
Yeah, you have to add something like that. Any felled or damaged trees on your property, for any reason, you shall be required to remove the tree and its stump, something like that.
I know a lot of insurance, if you look at about, you know, trees, will say even an act of God, or not an act of God. That's something they like using, cause that is nature.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Yeah.
Need a tight break in there, too.
Right, and with a point, you know, we have, within thirty days. Tree being, yeah, incident. That's a good point. So it's like, yeah, I'll get that a couple years, I'll get that now. Anything else you can think of? I like all those ideas.
Do we have in there, were you saying that when the tree falls, you have to start mounting it, getting it removed?
Yes, thirty, within thirty days.
Okay.
And then find tools, too.
And then the stump is within...
No, the stump would be...
It has to come at the same time as the tree's being moved.
Yeah.
We know that tree services have really long waiting periods. We waited two months to get our trees trimmed.
So should we say...
It's almost three months to get our trees taken out, because the ground was wet, and then this, and then that.
Okay, so how do you...
I think three months.
I think thirty days would be unreasonable.
Okay, should we say ninety days?
Or do we say, or with proof of...
Yeah, yeah, thirty days, and then they come out and say, "We can't get here until, like, June seventeen, and it's April."
Oh, you're good. Proof of employment, within thirty days, correct, you got that?
Right.
I think that's, that, yes, I, I see what you're saying, I agree. Cause they did take forever to come out here.
Yeah, I'm still busy.
You're not here yet. Okay, anything else about the tree stump? I'm really glad it was removed. I don't know of much.
Well, it, it is, it should be clearer, I agree with you.
Yeah, okay. Just something else to think about, too, I don't know if they put it in the budget or not, um, there are a lot of trees on this property that should be taken down, that are just bad. There's one out there that, but we had somebody come and look at it, and they said, "It's not..." Like, I worry about it, cause it was, like, hollow on the inside, but they said it, it really isn't a problem. I think they did look at one, this out there, um, cause we saw it at Tinsley and Taylor. I was like, it's just all over. Something to think about, as we're looking at this loan, um, maybe just putting some money aside as things come up, because there was that pine tree over by Building Four that they took down last year. Oh my, it was, like, gonna lean, fall into the building, and so glad it took it down, but there are other trees on this property that need to be addressed too, so, just something to think about.
There's a lot of unexpected things to the trees.
Oh, yeah, the blocks, yeah. Okay. Let me try to read messy here for a minute. Um, okay, moving on. Um, I need a motion for a resolution of the approval of accounts payable. I want to make a resolution for the approval of accounts payable. Okay?
Second.
Second. Um, first by trustee Sine, second by trustee Johnson, discussion? Everybody sign? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so pass, and we are adjourned at seven thirty-eight.